Day, one AAA, whatever.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the meeting, the Human Services Committee meeting. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, could the clerk take the roll, please? Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin, Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosch?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden? Present. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I would make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Citizens wishing to be heard tonight, we have Nicholas Clark.
The recent release of Samuel Alito's draft opinion overturning the central holding of Roe v. Wade has been a harrowing reminder to all of us of what is coming this summer. The Supreme Court of the United States is going to revoke health care protections that are nearly five decades old. Here in Michigan, we have an antiquated, and for nearly 50 years unconstitutional, 1931 law declaring abortions a criminal felony. This law will go into effect again this summer, once the Supreme Court releases their final opinion in Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health. In the wake of this news, I've seen the people I care about consider what are the nearest states, or even Canadian clinics, that may be available for Michiganders. Our governor, Gretchen Whitmer, is suing to have this law declared unconstitutional by our state Supreme Court per our Michigan State Constitution, and this may succeed. But even if it does, as judicial processes are slow, we may still find ourselves here in Michigan unable to seek valid reproductive health care services for months. But it is on this point that I would like to pass on what I think is hopefully useful information to everyone that is about to have their right stripped from them. In response to Whitmer's lawsuit, the county prosecutors of seven of the 13 counties in Michigan that have abortion clinics have stepped forward in a joint statement to say they will not bring any charges related to the 1931 statute. If you are a pregnant individual seeking an abortion, there are seven counties in Michigan where you may still be able to get the care you need. And while things are always shifting, those counties, for the time being, are Wayne, Oakland, Genesee, Washtenaw, Ingham, Kalamazoo, and Marquette counties. You may not need to travel out of state, or even out of the country, for your health care. On balance, things look dark. But county prosecutors, like our legislators, are elected officials, and as long as we vote for those who are willing to protect a person's right to choose, we can protect a fundamental human right to reproductive freedom. Finally, there is a ballot initiative in progress that we may have a chance to vote on in November, that would legislatively enshrine these health care protections into our state's constitution in a way that legislators could not stop. So please, sign the Michigan Reproductive Freedom for All petition, so that Michigan citizens will have the opportunity to vote on the proposal in November. Thank you.
There are no other citizens to be heard this evening, so we'll move on to item number four, updates. I just need to update the commissioners to let everyone know that the county seat for AAA 1B is still open. As you will recall, I held that, but because of a conflict of interest, I cannot hold that seat. So we do need a commissioner to take that committee on, as well as we need an older citizen to volunteer to be on that committee, so.
If anybody, any of the commissioners, if you want to serve on that, let me know. We've got to get somebody, so maybe by next meeting, we'll figure that out.
Great, thank you.
Do you know when they meet?
It's a Friday, but I can't tell you which one it is, and it's monthly. They were doing it virtually. I don't know where they're at with meetings now.
What time do they meet, do you know?
They were, it started at like nine in the morning, yeah.
Lisa, I have a quick one. I did forward this to the commissioners today. On May 24th, the BWROC Blue Water Recovery Community Center is having an open house, 24th, at 5:30 PM. I think it's important, if you get an opportunity, to go out and take a look at that. We are going to be in receipt of opioid settlement money, a fairly substantial amount that has very specific purposes that it needs to be used for. So these are one of the programs in the community that, you know, could potentially use some funding for that. And I talked a little bit about, with Carrie, and I did talk to Deb Johnson about it, who would be the best to maybe have, you know, in the room to facilitate some discussion with it? And there's a, there's a group that meets, help me out here. There's a group with Deb Johnson and others.
Yeah, it's an opioid.
Community Action Agency kind of stuff. So I would look, they deal with us on a fairly regular basis, so I would kind of turn to that group to make some, you know, maybe get a comprehensive plan, or make some recommendations on, you know, what we should be looking at. But I got that invite today, actually Dan Damon had sent it out to me, so just passing that information on, just so kind of get an understanding, I guess, of what they do over there. So if you're available, May 24th, at 5:30, it's an open house.
Any other updates? Moving on, any conceptual initiatives? No. No old business, moving on to new business? Item A?
I would make a motion for the proclamation, proclaiming May 9th through 13th is 2022 Senior Action Week in St. Clair County.
Support.
Action. I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item B, St. Clair County Library System Additional Closing Request?
I would move this to be approved for final action.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other Human Services matters tonight?
We probably should tell people that it was just closing for one day, not permanently.
Oh, yeah, in-service training, yeah. They'll be open.
We forgot a day, last week, last meeting.
Anything for information only? Accept a motion to receive and file packets?
Make that motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept a motion for adjournment?
Make that motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I would call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin? Commissioner Beeden? Present. Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosch?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here, thank you. Seeing no additions, if I could have a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Seeing none. I have no updates. Does anyone else have any updates? Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have no old business. Under new business, item 7A, the Fiscal Year 23 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Application. This is in the amount of $420,210. It's our mental health court, and they contract with the St. Clair County Mental Health Department for services. So this is for the 2023 year? So if I could have a motion?
I would make a motion to move this to the full board.
Support.
Support.
Does anyone have any questions? We have motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7B, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, 2023 Proposed Budget. Again, we're, this is October of '22 to September 30th of '23 budget, and needs to be presented in April to the state. So if I could have a motion to send that to full board?
Make a motion to send it to full board.
Support.
We have motion support. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that a good question for Carrie? This is year two of this, three of it program?
Three.
You're three, okay. You want to talk a little bit, I guess some of the commissioners may not have been around here, how we got to this point, and just kind of?
Well, actually, my associate is going to address that for you.
All right, Mike, jump up there, give us a little, give us a little history lesson.
Good evening, commissioners, mishapting Mr. Fletcher, Ms. Morris. What can I answer for you?
Well, where we were at before, we used to pay internally, state, you know, we went, I mean, just kind of, kind of what we were before and what we are today.
Are you referring Chairman Bohm to the fact that we were doing an appointed system with independent attorneys who were taking appointments?
Yes, yeah.
And then, okay, so for years, what we were doing was, we had a court-appointed system where attorneys could apply with the county to take appointments to do indigent defense work. The amount that was paid was, for a significant period of time, $60 an hour. The Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Act came into effect several years ago. The county made a decision to transition into a public defender's office, realizing that if they paid the increased rates that were proposed in standard eight, which was one of eight standards proposed in the Commission Act, that it would not be as cost-effective as it would be if we formed a public defender's office. And one of the primary incentives for doing that?
When I say increases, we're talking like double. Correct me if I'm wrong, at the time, I mean, it was, it was a substantial increase. And a lot of times, other counties weren't doing public defenders, you had a handful of them.
Right.
But this actually has, I want to say, become the industry norm for counties, but a?
That's right.
A whole bunch more people are doing this because of the change in.
Exactly. And part of the incentive for that was that the state was going to carry the bulk of those costs. They were going, in the form of the grant and the budget that we are submitting for approval. The county's obligation remains what they call the local share, and it remains constant at around three-quarters of a million dollars, which was what we were paying court-appointed counsel up to the point that we adopted the public defender's office. And so now we are going into our third year of operation. Our office is fully staffed. We're paying less now to our conflict attorneys, that would have been attorneys who remain on the roster receiving court-appointed work when there's a conflict of interest type of case. That number is going to continue to go down. We're going to absorb the vast majority of the public defense work.
I just want, I just was more for some of the new commissioners, a little history lesson, I guess, how we got there, so.
Do you feel it's successful?
I do, yes. I mean, we're in our third year, we're still, you know, there's still a learning curve, but I, you know, I talk to judges, I've not received any, anything in the way of any kind of serious criticism about the way that things are being handled. I think frankly, the team that I've put together is a good one, I think that we're doing the job that we're supposed to be doing. We're serving the community very well, I think, in that regard. Again, I think that considering what the requirements to the county would have been had we not adopted the public defender's office, that it's a cost-effective means to provide these services.
And for now, we're receiving grant, a grant still?
Yes.
For the excess?
That's right.
And we just don't know, wasn't it, was it five years they said they were gonna?
Well, it's subject to annual appropriation at the state.
Right.
However, we're not required to comply with the standards if they don't fund it.
Okay.
And I think all counties are too far into it for the state to not fund it.
Keep it going, hopefully, yes.
Mike, how big a staff do you have?
I have about 20 people, I have 16 attorneys, and the rest is support staff.
Very good, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
So we had a motion in support, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7C, the Contract Approval Request for Congress Collection.
Make motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
We have motion in support. Is there any questions? We have, the undersheriff is here, and he knows everything there is to know about this. Basically, right, all this is doing is, it's a collection agency, when we have people that are, that are under our spell, I was going to say, but that's really not the best word, when we have them in, in the jail, and they incur expenses, so they go at them.
I don't, what are you guys, 15, 20% kind of stuff? Is it better, I'm not even, it's not, it's not, it's not that great, yeah.
So these are things, monies we wouldn't have ever got, so if they can get it, it all, all is a bonus coming back. Okay, if there's no other questions, I would ask for all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7D, the Contract Approval Request for Kiesler Police Supply, and we do have the undersheriff here, so first I'll ask for a motion.
Motion.
Support.
We have motion in support. Want to tell us a little story?
Good evening, everyone. The agenda invited me before you is a purchase for patrol rifles. It's not a new concept for the Sheriff's Department, we have patrol rifles. Unfortunately, ours are aged, they're 30-plus years old, they're the old M-16s that came from the military with the iron sights, they're heavy, they're clunky, they shoot, but not as, technology has just changed everything lately. And what we ended up doing is, we reached out to several suppliers, and I had our firearms instructors, and people that are very, I guess, tactical with weapons, come in, shoot several firearms, and they decided that the FN model was hands-down the best of all. So at that point, I worked with purchasing, with Melissa Krolcheck, so I'd like to thank her, she's not here, she put it out in the midden, we got some bids, I was able to work with Dina Alterdais, thank you, Dina, for all your help. We found the money within our budget, so I'm not here asking for money, I'm just asking for requests to purchase these weapons. These weapons will be weapons that'll have optics on them, so we won't be using iron sights anymore, and also have a light attached to them, so we can see in the darkness for the nighttime patrols.
Good. This is being picked up, the majority of it's from the drug forfe, drug forfeiture?
A large portion is from the drug forfeiture.
Large, SRT and Drug Task Force is picking up the second biggest portion of it, and then just a small amount from?
Secondary Road Patrol has money to fund theirs, as well as the CMV, commercial motor vehicle.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if nobody has any more questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7E, this is our contract renewal with Port Huron area school districts.
I'd move this to the full board.
Support.
Support. Any questions? This is just a renewal.
Quick question, who else, are we still doing Anchor Bay, and who else do we have contracted? Okay, thank you.
How long you been doing Memphis?
One year.
I should know this.
Last year.
Yeah, we just started Memphis, we're in our first year with Memphis schools.
Okay, that's right, it's, but you're not doing all the Memphis, city of Memphis itself?
No, we're just doing the schools only.
Yeah, I knew that.
We had a relationship with the Memphis PD, and we worked everything out with the logistics with it, so yeah, just the schools only.
Thank you.
And this one for Port Huron is just a renewal, typical of what we did the last time with the three-year contract, just with Dina adding in the increases for the wages and increase in services.
Good, all right, thank you. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7F, the Contract Approval Request for Harris Recording Solutions. This is for the Registered Deeds Office, it is a system that's going to file our, archive our history, and a five-year contract for services to keep it up. It's $125,000, from what I understand, $125,000 dollar system, with $100,000 that is for the five-year contract for maintenance.
Make a motion to move to the full board.
Support.
We have motion in support? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters? Seeing none, motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support.
Good evening, I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin? Commissioner Beeden? Present. Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosch?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Item number two, additions, deletions, seeing nothing, could I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, any citizens to be heard tonight? Seeing none, any updates by commissioners?
Got a quick one, Duke. I got a chance to go through the Challenger display over at SC4. They set it up in the basement, it's part of the STEM programs, pretty, pretty cool. If you get a chance to go over there, it's definitely worth checking it out, and, and just seeing what it's all about. It's really the, to lead the kids into this, you know, the STEM, the science, technology, engineering stuff, and real interactive, kind of set up like a space shuttle, you walk into different rooms, and it's a tutorial and stuff. I was, I mean, as an adult, I was pretty, pretty entertained by it, so.
No, thank you. Any other updates? Conceptual initiatives? Nothing this evening? Seeing no old business, we'll move to new business, we have one item, the Septage Receiving Station Rehabilitation at the landfill. Matt Williams is here tonight, if anybody's got any questions, would I make a motion first, if I could?
I'll make a motion to bring it.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Hold on, I got, before you go there, I got, I got to acknowledge somebody in the room, former Commissioner Hydeman, that started with the bioreactor concept 20 years ago, Howard? Yeah, 20 years ago, and then we first kind of drew it up on paper, and it was pre, like I said, I got 18 years on the board, so you think about that, and by the time we were able to get it, a lot of loops and hoops, you know, so on and so forth, here we are today, 20 years later essentially, from concept, and that thing is working, working very well, producing, you know, lots of, lots of gas, turning it into power and things like that, so quite a, quite a journey, Howard, to think that that was 20 years ago. Your hair, your hair was black back then, too. So Matt, this is just the, the holding tanks in the pumps, or?
Matt, why don't you get up and explain it?
Good evening, everyone. No, this, the proposal in front of you tonight, the bid that we received, is to replace the actual processing equipment in the Septage Receiving Station itself. That includes the basic honey monster unit, the grinder, the flow meter, the pH meter, you know, all of the rock trap, the heavy object trap, basically all the processing equipment.
Okay, so to put it in layman's terms, the truck pulls up with the stuff?
Yep, hooks on to a fitting on, in a, in a drive-through bay, starts, pushes a button, stuff starts moving inside, and he lets his septage through, and it's processed, it basically takes.
Separates liquids from the solids, the liquids gets then forced main, which gets put into the waste stream, which breaks the trash down five to seven times faster, and produces a lot more gas.
Yes.
You could have given the presentation today. Just engineer, though, these guys go up, you know, I got a third grade stuff.
Any other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Commissioner Famae, real quickly, next month I'll be in front of you again, a project which is very closely associated to this. Just downstream from the Septage Receiving Station is a valve vault that we are going to get rid of, and bring all of the working valves that we need to up above ground into a structure. We're taking bids for that right now, and I should see you next month with another proposal to do that work. Should be much less of a dollar amount than this project.
Looking forward to seeing you.
Matt, well, I got you up there, PFAS study updates, we doing anything with that? I know we had some things in line items to look at.
Essentially, what we're doing, and have been doing for the last three years, is monitoring where our levels are in the leachate from the landfill. And what we've found is, over the last three years, we've seen a gradual, slow decline in the concentrations. When, you know, we have not, the, our, all of our processed leachate is wastewater ends up next door here at the Port Huron Wastewater Treatment Plant. And it will be up to them to tell us if what we're sending them is too rich and too strong for them to process, so that they can make their affluent levels that they're required to meet. So far, we've, we haven't had to enact any large dollar item processing or treatment at the landfill, as you know, otherwise you would have heard about it. But the trend is down, which is actually real positive, so we may not have to do anything of a high dollar value, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a motion, I have support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is the Smiths Creek Landfill Activities Report.
I'd make a motion to receive and file?
Support.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other environmental public work matters? Seeing none, information only, the monthly Parks and Rec financial documents?
Make a motion to receive and file?
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, receive and file?
I'd make a motion.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
This time I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order, if I could have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin? Commissioner Beeden? Present. Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Bandenbosch?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Okay, I see we have an addition, 2A, could I have a motion to have that moved to 7E?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, do we have any updates?
David, I have two of them. So on the 27th of April, myself, Commissioner Van Den Bosch, Kerry Fletcher, Bill Griffin, who's the tax guy for East China and China, his other individual, Vern Westrick, also in that room, Cindy?
Yes.
So we were talking about the taxation of the new Blue Water Energy Center that's going to be coming online, just to get some numbers and what it looks like. A lot of you probably remember DTE, we went and worked a settlement with them, you know, on the valuations of the coal-fired plant, because they're depreciate, depreciating assets. Just to get straight with our, just to get straight with the numbers and everything. So we actually have a follow-up meeting with the head of taxation for DTE, just to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page. We've always had a great relationship with them, no issues, so on and so forth, we just don't want any issues moving forward, because we're talking, we're talking, talking big money here. You know, that valuation on that new plant, 951 million?
Yep.
I think was the number, so if you take 951, you chop it in half, that's 475 million. The existing plant is on the rolls for about 230 million, so that new Blue Water Energy Center that is actually coming online is worth more money than the two existing plants currently. So I don't anticipate any issues, problems, anything like that, we're just working through there, and we'll, we'll sign off, so everybody's on the same page. Second thing I want to talk a little bit about, I've had this question asked to me, you know, a million times, here at St. Clair, and where the status, so on and so forth. You've read some different articles, I'm sure, on the St. Clair end. It's currently in a receivership position, they have somebody that is actually assigned to that particular project, to get it, A, up and running, to essentially either finish it, sell it, so on and so forth. So it's in a spot now where it is going to be able to move forward. I was obviously very involved in that project, spent a lot of time on it and stuff, and I, and I want to share with you, and I think you guys know this, but there's zero county dollars in that project. I hear people all the time, oh, the county put all this money into it, we didn't put 10 cents into the St. Clair end project, okay? And I was asked this question for the radio today, because they said, well, hindsight's 20/20, if you had to do it all over again, what would you have done different? I said, I would have done the exact same thing. It is our jobs as commissioners, when business and opportunity comes to St. Clair County, to try to help people foster investment, right? That's the name of the game. Nobody would have anticipated pandemic, right? I, I sit on the convention visitors board, I used to, but I still do a lot of stuff with them. There's a couple hoteliers on there that are longtime successful hoteliers that had to close their hotels. These guys are 30-year industry veterans. You went from 65% occupancy rates to under 20. A lot of these guys were hovering around 12% to 15%. Not going to stay in business at 12% or 15%. I know the, the fitness industry lost about 30%, as you guys well know, I'm in the fitness industry, so just the, the, the things that happened with that. So I just kind of want to address that, because I know sometimes, you know, hey, Bohm, you were really involved in it, yada, yada, yada. Absolutely, I thought it was great for the city, and if you get an opportunity to look to see what's there, probably 85 complete, 85% complete, that is, that is going to get completed, that is going to get finished, that is going to be a major asset for the city of St. Clair. And I know for a fact that some are there, book solid on weddings and everything else out there, so, all good stuff. I just want to address that, that the county money, the perception that the county puts some money into it is, is completely false.
The other thing I've heard, I'm sorry, people have said, well, the, the county gave them all these tax abatements, well, you can't get, there's tax abatements that are allowed in industrial property, but not hotels and things of that nature, it's just a lot of misinformation. Basically, that guy came to town and his crew, and they were hell-bent that they were going to redevelop that and make it into something fantastic, and my granddaughter's reception was there, and it is fantastic. Unfortunately, the pandemic clobbered them, financing problems, other, other projects that were stressed, and he and his, his investors invested a pile of money there, in there. Unfortunately, the business climate turned against him. And I agree with Jeff, there'll be a receiver, the lender will want to get that thing done and spiffed up so it can be sold, and, and I think that's what's going to happen.
And the bottom line is, it looks a lot better than it did...
It was falling in the water.
Right, right.
I mean, literally, it was a teardown deal, so, yeah, just wanted, just wanted to address that issue.
All right, thank you. Any, any updates from any other commissioners? Any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
We have no old business, so we'll move to new business. 7A, Commissioner Beeden, District 2, Your American Rescue Plan Project.
I'm requesting some funds for a generator for Mid-City Nutrition. Obviously, if they were without power, we have a population that would go without having a warm meal. They would also serve as a location for a cooling station. Let's hope that it warms up sometime soon here, but also a warming station in the winter months, so that generator would be put to good use there.
Can I have a motion to send that to the full board?
Make a motion.
Support.
Any questions for Lisa? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7B, contract approval request for the estate of mine builders.
I'd make a motion to send this to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, the 2022 budget adjustments. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Any discussion?
You know, a, a few years ago, we had a, a report that would come out, there's a lot of budget adjustments that happened because of timing, right? Because we've already spent 90, we would look at it and see that there was 90% of the funds spent, and, but all the money got spent in the first quarter, let's say, or the majority of it, and then the rest was the follow-through. We, we were receiving a report that would show that something is, is a normal occurrence. So when I look at something and see we have a, a million dollars in a budget, and we've spent 92% of it in the first quarter, then I look at it and think, holy smokes, if we already spent, right, $920,000, how are we going to make it the rest of the year? But the rest of the year is just, you know, a small portion that's paid, and that's, that's a normal, you know, it's an uploaded fund or, or whatever. So I don't know if, if, I would like the alarming things, where you're just saying, you know, normally we spend, you know, $2 million on this, and this year we're going to spend $3.2 million because somebody's over budget, right? It's just whether it's personnel or, or whatever, so.
So that was, that's part of the normal summary budget to actual report that's on the full board agenda, and I believe our previous finance director would just send out an email to commissioners if there was something that looked a little unusual, so we can start doing that again.
Yeah, that, just a, right, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, Parks Manning Table Reclassification Request.
I make a motion to move it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7E, addition was the Commissioner Van Den Bosch, District 7, American Rescue Plan Project, and that's a generator also. Could I have a motion first?
Motion to send to full board.
Support.
Sure enough. Let me give us a description.
What it is, it's a generator for the Marine City City Hall, which is also the cooling and warming centers. Anytime we have a power outage or a major issue in the community, it's set up so we can put COTS and everything in it, and the only thing it doesn't have is a kitchen. We have used some of the schools, but some of the problems with the schools, if it's during school, then we can't use it, so this one, we don't have to worry about that, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.